Chair Powell, you can go ahead and start. We are live.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I call to order this special meeting of the University of Minnesota Board of Regents. I want to welcome, offer welcome to one and all, and thank those who are joining us via the livestream video this morning. I want to begin with a very quick refresher on our electronic meeting protocol. We will continue to keep everyone muted to reduce background noise. If you wish to ask a question or make a comment, use raise hand feature with Zoom, and staff will keep a speaker's list for me. When I call on you, please unmute yourself. All votes will be recorded by roll call as required by the open meeting law. And finally, I'll remind everybody that today's meeting is open to the public via the livestream, and it'll be archived on our website for later viewing. So with that, we will return, or we'll turn to our agenda. The first and the only item on our agenda is a resolution related to fall 2020 course modality and move-in. Our presenters for this item are President Gabel, Provost Croson, Director Michael Osterholm from our Center for Infectious Disease Research and Policy. Also joining us in this meeting and available for questions are the chancellors of the Crookston, Duluth, Morris, and Rochester campuses. So Mary Holt Claus, Lynn Black, Michelle Baer, and Lori Carroll will all be on this meeting call. Vice President and Dean of the University of Minnesota Medical School Jacob Toller is on the call. Jill DeBoer, the Director of the Health Emergency Response Office, is on, and Budget Director Julie Tonason. So I want to thank all of them for joining us, and they will be available. Before we hear from our presenters, I'd like to make just a few comments. I want everybody to know that this board, our president, and the University of Minnesota remain laser-focused on students returning to campus in a safe way, reducing as much risk as possible to our entire university community while delivering high-quality education and a comprehensive student experience. But, like all universities and colleges, we face an ongoing and an evolving challenge from the novel coronavirus. And it is a very, very difficult challenge for all of us. There's really no one way, one right way to approach the fall 2020 semester. No approach is without its pros and cons. So where does that leave us today? In a moment, we will hear from President Gabel about her proposal to postpone in-person instruction and housing move-in for at least two weeks for undergraduates on the Twin Cities, Duluth, and Rochester campuses. This action will provide additional time for the university to evaluate new and emerging guidance on testing, and we'll hear our presenters speak in greater detail on that topic. It also enables our continued evaluation of what other institutions are doing to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. The president has brought us a responsible and a measured proposal today, and one that I believe is the right thing to do. I want to take a moment to thank the hundreds of students and parents who've taken time to write the board on this matter. Your voices are thoughtful and passionate, and it's clear that you want to get back to school. I also want to acknowledge the input that we've received from student government leaders across the system and our faculty. Please know that we are committed to make our way through this pandemic as safely as possible. With that, President Gabel, I turn it over to you for your remarks and the other presentations.
Thank you, Chair Powell, Vice Chair Spigam, members of the board. Good morning. Over the last five months, we've taken important, difficult, and transformational steps together to address the evolving nature of what is the worst health crisis of any of our lifetimes, including the efforts to keep our university family healthy, safe, and well while advancing and curating our academic mission. In particular, in mid-April, I charged Executive Vice President and Provost Rachel Croson to lead a Fall 2020 Scenarios Advisory Team aimed at planning the delivery of academic content in fall 2020 in the context of the COVID-19 pandemic. This team focused on all aspects of academic life: classrooms, labs, housing and dining, and student life and engagement. Above all else, as you've heard from us several times, their work was grounded in the university's North Star goal in all of this effort, which is to continue our mission while keeping our community safe. And we've worked towards this goal in the spirit of flexibility, ensuring that we could adapt as changing public health conditions became apparent, and also so that we could permit individuals to look out for what works best for them and their families to address health concerns or other challenges. All of this was captured in a rubric that we've brought before you several times that on campus and through the system, we've been calling the Sunrise Plan. And through this Sunrise Plan, we've brought back many of our researchers. We've restarted most of our clinical care. We've opened a lot of our services. And we were actually also able to run a small slate of face-to-face classes in July. The team's recommendations for the fall were presented to you and approved in June. And those plans were developed after extensive research in consultation with our own public health experts here at the U, as well as the broader university community, shared governance groups, and were anchored in what we knew and know at the time about the virus, what we knew and know about human behavior, math, and the available science and research as it becomes apparent to us over time. And those plans have been in process since their approval in June. I want to take a moment to recognize that by anyone's measure, this has been quite an experience for every single person involved, the tens of thousands of us on campus, everyone affected by what our faculty, staff, and students are experiencing. I have to express my appreciation to our university family, the faculty and staff who've been pivoting and pivoting again around the decisions we've had to make related to the virus. And I want to express to all of our students, particularly those who are moving on campus for the first time, how much we ache for their lost experiences. As you know, I have a student in my youngest child who is exactly the same age. So I am making these decisions with all prints of you in mind. But we've also learned a lot since we started five months ago. We know more than we did then. We know more than we did when we presented the fall plan to you in June. And we're particularly learning a lot in real time right now as our peers reopen their campuses. And as you've seen, many university leaders from across the country in many different types of university and colleges say that despite extensive preparation, research, planning, and advice, the landscape is shifting yet again, and we need to reevaluate our fall plans. So what has changed in these last few days? Eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds are now the fastest-growing group of positive cases. And as the confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Minnesota continue to rise at a steady rate, as reported this past weekend by MDH, roughly one-quarter of the new cases are now in our key age group. Secondly, all of our peers had fall plans. There was no one in the entire country who took this situation lightly. Everyone has been working nonstop with advice to develop what they've done in order to maximize the likelihood of a safe and successful return to campus. And despite all of that work, we've seen very troubling results on many of our campuses with whom we would compare ourselves or with whom we have similar things in common. COVID-19 has spread rapidly. It has forced very abrupt pivots across many higher education institutions, and we expect more to follow. So for example, during the first week of classes at UNC Chapel Hill, a spate of COVID-19 infection clusters shifted all undergraduate instruction to remote learning and resulted in students moving out just one week after they moved in. Similarly, North Carolina State has had to move undergraduate classes to online only for the remainder of the semester after seeing a spike. We've all seen the Notre Dame story in the news that despite a unique and novel on-campus testing plan upon move-in, immediately saw a spike and had to suspend all in-person instruction to be replaced by remote instruction. Amongst our Big Ten peers, Maryland decided to begin their fall classes as scheduled, but will delay in-person instruction for two weeks. Michigan State is transitioning from a hybrid model to an all-online model. We've seen Iowa State announce extreme disciplinary policies for student social gatherings after significant student participation in large get-togethers. Iowa State has identified 175 students with COVID-19 despite a robust move-in testing plan. For schools more like UMD, East Carolina is moving online. UNC Charlotte, Butler, the University of Maine, the University of Toledo, all similar-sized and in similar locations have had to make abrupt changes to their fall plans upon move-in despite having robust testing plans of various types in place. These experiences demonstrate for us how minimizing transmission of COVID-19 is a formidable challenge for college campuses as it has been for the country at large. Everyone has had a plan. Everyone has been working really hard on this. But in the middle of all of this, just last week, messaging from federal government leadership was made off the cuff indicating that maybe we should have up to 10,000 tests per day. Maybe that should be our standard. I will point out for the board and for everyone listening that that would be more than half of the total tests the entire state of Minnesota does per day right now. This is not formal policy. In fact, it was just a conversational remark, but it highlights how federal guidance is changing, the lack of clarity on what would be acceptable standards of testing, and the reason why when you look at plans from college to college and university to university, they all look different despite the fact that we're all relying on expert advice. What's important to note is that this off-the-cuff remark does not align with the MTEST plan that you approved in June. And I'll remind you that the MTEST plan was developed with guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health, the CDC, and our own experts. And that's why our plan is the same as Minnesota State's. So statewide, we are consistent. But as we've observed in other cases and on other campuses, testing protocols have not prevented large clusters that have forced these wholesale adjustments for entire institutions. And as we'll learn later from our subject matter experts, testing is not a cure. Testing is not a silver bullet. So as we've done throughout these five months, we've learned to adapt. As we've watched our peers, as we process these federal guideline changes or potential changes, we have to adjust accordingly. And we have to do so with what we anchor in as the maximum likelihood for safety for our community. So today, we're presenting you with a modified proposal of the fall plan approved last June. In particular, the proposal seeks to delay the move-in dates for the university housing on the Duluth, Rochester, and Twin Cities campuses for at least two weeks to provide additional time to evaluate new and emerging guidance on testing as well as continued evaluation of the techniques that we are using here in Minnesota and that are being used across the country to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in general and on college and university campuses. This window helps us avoid moving large numbers of students into on-campus housing and then locking them down or asking them to move right back out again if the public health conditions eventually require. And we have reason to believe they might, given what has happened on other campuses. Undergraduate courses for all three campuses would proceed a schedule but would be wholly online for at least these two weeks with some limited exceptions. For example, graduate and professional students would continue with their schedule as communicated previously. The population density of those groups is much less than undergraduates, and it provides a better ability for us to protect from transmission. I also want to affirm, because I know there's been some confusion about this, that we will let students and parents know our next steps before any housing or tuition deadlines. There would be no financial consequences to any of our students or their families for these decisions, and there never has been. I'll note also that at the Crookston campus, move-in for university housing will continue, and students already on campus at Morris should remain on campus, and their classes are proceeding in the hybrid models that they've scheduled. I want to explain why we're doing this that way and why those campuses are different. There is a timing issue, and also their capacity is different because both campuses' operating communities or reported case numbers are much lower than in other areas of Minnesota. We also believe the likelihood of widespread disease transmission will be lower on the campuses themselves because of density and how those campuses are able to manage within that density. We're closely monitoring both campuses, and both chancellors are on the line if you have any questions about what's happening in either place. So, members of the board, this is extraordinarily difficult to bring before you today. This entire process is extraordinarily difficult. No one likes this. No one is enjoying this. No one is benefiting from this. All of us would love to have our students back on campus. It's what we do for a living. It's what we are fulfilled by. It's what our work is all about. But we also know that we have to do this in a way that puts safety first. So we're sticking to that value that we've identified from the very beginning of prioritizing the health and safety of our university family. And we respect and recognize that there are differing opinions about what it means to prioritize health and safety, and we know that that will be discussed today. But we want to use this time to learn from and closely monitor our peers, make sure we understand the evolving higher education landscape, the ever-changing standards and conditions in our state and federally before we make the next phase and move forward in a way that we know prioritizes health and safety. So Provost Croson is here to discuss the modified plan. We have our subject matter experts, Mike Osterholm, Dr. Toller, Jill DeBoer, ready to answer specific questions. But before I turn it over to Provost Croson, I want to give our university community a little reminder. On this date in 1968, at another particularly challenging time in our nation's history, the University of Minnesota Medical Center performed the world's first successful human bone marrow transplant between siblings who were not identical twins, yet one of the university's best-known firsts. And since then, we've performed thousands of bone and marrow transplants for the treatment of various blood cancers and other disorders. I share this historical marker today not only because I think it's important to recognize these kinds of anniversaries, but also to highlight that we have a long history in challenging times of demonstrating character, strength, and resiliency to reinforce our mission of learning, discovery, and service. And this is a mission that serves our campus community, serves the state of Minnesota, and serves the world. And it's guided by an inherent commitment to our values that will ensure safely emerging stronger and that our best days lie ahead. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to Provost Croson.
Okay. Thank you, President Gabel. Provost Croson.
Thank you, President Gabel. If you can start up the slide, thank you. You can go to the next slide. So President Gabel mentioned a number of the outbreaks on campuses that people have seen. I'm not going to go through them again. I will note that there are a number of outbreaks that have happened just in the last few days. So she mentioned the University of Toledo. Central Michigan University reported 38 cases in its first week of in-person classes. Virginia Commonwealth University reported 36 positives after one week of in-person classes. North Dakota now has 71 cases connected to sororities and fraternities. And there are 89 positive cases at the University of Kansas. So these outbreaks that we've seen over the last week or two sort of continue to come. And as President Gabel mentioned, the testing regimes at these various campuses were quite different from each other. So North Carolina did not do pre-arrival or testing upon arrival, but Notre Dame did. East Carolina encouraged students to have a test before returning to campus. Tennessee is also doing wastewater and surveillance testing. So there's quite a variation within these universities about what their regime is going to be. In addition, as seen on the slide, a number of other universities have chosen to pivot or delay their in-person start. So in addition to the ones that are listed here, East Carolina fully pivoted. Towson University announced a delay through August 30th. UNC Charlotte, President Gabel mentioned. Butler University is delayed for two weeks. Clemson is delayed by four weeks. And these campuses have also, these campuses announcing pivots or delays have also varied by testing. So Maryland, for example, is still planning testing before arrival and upon arrival. University of Pittsburgh has quarantining before arrival plus surveillance testing once they arrive. And then finally, many of us have seen the news about consequences for students who have come to campus. So of course, Purdue had a number of suspensions, Syracuse, and St. Olaf's locally. If you can go to the next slide, please. So this is a map, a snapshot as of Saturday of what campuses have changed plans for their fall semester. And because this is a snapshot as of Saturday, it's not necessarily updated. But if you want to, if you look at your docket and you click on the link on the top, you can explore the current data. So you can see sort of what others around the country are doing. You can go to the next slide, please. So we were not, we're not where we thought we would be as a nation and as a state. As President Gabel mentioned, within Minnesota, 20- to 24-year-olds now make up the highest percentage of COVID-19 cases. And from MDH's August 21st media call, the most transmission is being seen in the 15- to 19-age range and the 20- to 29-year age range. So what our plan is for this delay is to spend the time reviewing the data against our criteria for determining what adjustments, if any, are necessary for us to move forward. And that data really falls into sort of three bins. The first is data on the case demographics. So the number of new cases reported each week in college-age individuals in the county, sorry, where the campus is located, as well as overall case numbers in those counties. In addition, in the Twin Cities, we're expecting approximately 4,500 graduate and professional students to be on campus with some level of in-person or blended classes. And as we'll see later, perhaps a few hundred residential undergraduates. We're going to be asking off-campus students only to come to campus when necessary, but we'll be closely watching the transmission rates in those populations as well. So the second thing we'll be tracking, of course, is the changing federal and state guidelines and our capacity to respond to those guidelines. And then other campus and community responses. What is the campus and community readiness? What's our medical support, right? Are we prepared for this influx of students, given this new information of what's likely to happen? Please go to the next slide. So I want to talk today a little bit about our implementation for this two-week delay. I want to highlight, as President Gabel mentioned, our lodestar of flexibility across the system and overtime. So I'll speak briefly about Crookston and Morris, but then most of my comments are going to be about Duluth, Rochester, and the Twin Cities. I'll talk about housing, dining, and transportation, course modalities, student life. I'm going to ask Dr. Osterholm to lead the discussion about testing. And then I'll come back and talk for a moment about financial implications. And then finally, I'm going to turn it back over to President Gabel to talk about next steps. So go ahead to the next slide, please. So as President Gabel mentioned, students have already arrived at Crookston and at Morris. These campuses are in smaller communities. They're not large cities. And so as a reminder, I'm mostly going to focus on the Twin Cities, Duluth, and Rochester, which not only have not had move-in yet, but also are more metaplex-type areas. You can go to the next slide, please. So our plan is for residential move, or move-in for residential housing to be postponed for at least two weeks. As in the spring, there'll be some exceptions. So for students whose residential housing is their safest place, perhaps some international students who have nowhere else to go, if individuals have extenuating circumstances. In the Twin Cities, apartment move-in has already begun, and so our plan is for that to continue. We'll be prorating contracts, I'm sorry, prorating credits for the two weeks of lost housing. And off-campus students will be asked to limit their presence on campus for reasons of academic or personal health. You can go to the next slide, please. Student dining contracts will also be postponed for at least two weeks. There will be some limited dining options available on each campus earlier for the students who are there. As with housing, the plan is to prorate the charges, and the Twin Cities campus bus routes will run on the summer schedule. You can go to the next slide, please. I want to reiterate our principle from the very beginning that faculty retain autonomy over the modality of their courses consistent with public health guidance. Our plan would be for the vast majority of courses to be offered distance for the first two weeks. At the Twin Cities and Rochester campuses, this means that courses would be offered distance from September 8th to September 20th. And the 21st, 22nd, Monday, the 22nd would be the, Tuesday, the 22nd would be the first day of in-person classes. At Duluth, the classes were scheduled to begin on August 31st and would now begin virtually on that date and in-person or blended on September 11th. There may be some very limited courses which would require in-person instruction. And if this resolution's approved today, those courses would be identified this week and students notified by next week Monday. Graduate and professional courses would remain in their modalities as planned. I want to highlight that faculty are prepared for this modality shift. Faculty development offerings were available since mid-March. All campuses had faculty engaged and attended. We've had about 3,000 participate in webinars and workshops and discussions, about 1,000 attended five- or nine-week trainings. We've had about 800 individual consultations. And we made a set of Zoom tutorials about how to pivot courses and teach at a distance, and those have had about 30,000 views. In addition, there's been additional support within colleges and on each campus in order to ensure that faculty were prepared for a pivot like this. You can go to the next slide, please. On the student life side, student unions will be both offering business hours and virtual. At Rochester, they'll be all virtual. Rec centers would continue to be open. Boynton, the University of Minnesota-Duluth Health Service, and Olsted would continue to see students, some in-person, but mostly virtually. Boynton has been having about 500 in-person visits weekly, which has been increasing, about 1,000 telehealth weekly visits, mostly for mental health, and of course, are offering COVID-19 testing, contact tracing, and quarantine support. In addition, we fully understand overall how stressful this is for our students. And as President Gabel mentioned, we're doing everything we can to ease that stress. So we're prorating housing and dining. Faculty are putting in significant effort to prepare for the course modalities. Our plan is to make a recommendation to the board for the entirety of fall before the deadline for tuition refunds. And we're also extending the deadline for students who want to take a gap year. Finally, there's all kinds of other student support units that are available virtually and in-person. I do want to just say something about the telehealth and the mental health services that have been offering. So in addition to video workshops, informal drop-in support, mental health workshops upon request, and check-ins via Boynton with a trained peer, Boynton has even offered the Paws program virtually where you can interact with a pet in order to help ease mental health. So there's been quite a lot of activity around ensuring that students have the support they need in these troubling times. So next, I want to turn the presentation to Dr. Osterholm to talk about testing. As President Gabel mentioned, each university has a testing program. But because there's no national programs, there's significant differences across states. Our approach has been based in our partnership with MDH. And as she mentioned, we're following the same criteria as Minnesota State and most other universities in Minnesota. And with that, maybe you can go to the next slide, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Osterholm.
Thank you, Provost Croson. Dr. Osterholm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, President Gabel, Provost Croson, members of the Board of Regents and others attending. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here with you today to discuss this situation and as it emerges, what the implications might be for testing. Let me just say at the outset, I share a unique experience with you in that I actually sit on the Board of Regents of Luther College in Decore, Iowa, where we are struggling with the very same issue that I actually approach it from a Regents position, not just from that of a faculty member here at the University of Minnesota. So let me just clarify one thing, I think, at the outset. And this goes back to an op-ed piece that I wrote in April, published in the New York Times, which in a sense predicted we'd be right where we're at today. And if you go back and look at that, you'll see that the And if you go back and look at that, you'll see that the infrastructure for testing in the United States would never support what many people had proposed it should. And again, I want to emphasize that testing is a very critical piece of what and how we respond to this pandemic. But that in and of itself, it is not the answer of which many people have wanted to hang it on. There is no silver bullet to take it, to put into the heart of this virus. It's going to be a layered approach and many different aspects of what we do. But let me just start out by saying, first of all, you need the right infrastructure. And we have been behind on the infrastructure in this country as it relates to test reagents, to materials for testing, swabs, et cetera. And even with all of the advances we've made in new technologies for testing, we continue to lag behind. And, and we don't have adequate testing capability. There was optimism in this very state that one day we would have an optimal amount of testing that would far exceed any of our requirements. And we learned quickly how that was very much a challenge. And that because of supply chains and the needed components to any number of these different tests, some proprietary, some not, some just basic lab supplies, that we would have a problem with this. And I will emphasize that again today. What we have just witnessed in the past week are now new requirements on a system that was already struggling. And what I mean by that is if you look at Dr. Burks's comments, which I found to be not helpful, and many of my colleagues feel exactly the same way, they were not in keeping with any kind of consultative process through the federal government to come up with that number. If you look at her recommendations right now, we would need to bring onboard an extra 50 million tests a day in this country. Now, that is, I can, I can create a walking path to the moon easier than I can probably create 50 million new tests a day overnight. And so please take that in context of what the reality is. On top of that, we're all facing potentially another critical juncture very shortly. The Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services are about to release new requirements to protect long-term care facilities, for which, if you just look at them right here in Minnesota with 2,066 of them, they're going to require testing of staff on a routine basis based on the underlying prevalence of the virus in the community. And right now, if the prevalence is less than 5% of test positives, you must test all employees once a month. If it is actually at 5% to 10%, which many of our counties would be, you have to test them weekly, and if it's over 10%, you have to test all staff twice a week. That is going to bring in the requirement of another 25,000 to 200,000 tests a month in Minnesota, in Minnesota, just to comply with CMS requirements. We're going to struggle to get that kind of testing capacity available to us. So I just want to point out that this is happening all over the country. There are those islands of locations that have had the adequate testing. And if I had a nickel for every time someone said, well, we can do it, we have all the supplies we need, even if it's a laboratory-developed test, not, it's a generic, it's not requiring specific company-related reagents, we have seen it falter, whether it be pipettes or vials or whatever. So anyone who thinks that right now we can test our way out of this just from an infrastructure standpoint, we absolutely cannot. Then you want to test the right population. And we've heard this issue over and over again. If I could just test everybody every day, well, that would be ideal if you could do that every morning and someone could wake up. But I've already pointed out, that's not realistic. So what you want to do is test those people that are at highest risk. And this is come 100% consistent with the CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health, which I might, by the way, say this is our document here, the smart testing, which has become adopted by a number of institutions around the country. You want to test the people who are symptomatic. We understand that people who are asymptomatic surely are capable of transmitting this virus, but that is at a much lower rate of positivity, meaning if I went out and sampled 1,000 sick people or 1,000 well people, the chances of finding with limited testing, the number of true positives would be in the sick people. As Willie Sutton once said, why do I rob banks? Because that's where the money is. Why do we test sick people? Because that's where we have the best impact in terms of that. So we're not minimizing the issue of, of people who are not symptomatic. Now, the other problem with testing the right population, which I think is going to become a huge challenge, we're getting more and more reports of students unwilling to be interviewed or be tested on contact tracing. It's estimated that a number of institutions, and I have talked to colleges and university officials around the country, nonstop in the past few days, a number of the colleges are reporting that more than 50% of students say, no, I don't want to talk to you, even though I was exposed, and I refuse to be tested. So it, it, testing also requires you have to have a willing population that is going to come forward and be tested, even if you're a contact. Then you have to have the right kind of tests. And clearly, we know that some tests are, are what we want to have relative if we have a high index of suspicion somebody's infected. The antigen test, for example, which is a rapid detection test, which we've heard a lot about, that actually requires the fact that if it's a negative, you then still have to do a PCR test as such, so that it doesn't give you the answer in a sense of you have a negative test and with sensitivities well below what we see with PCR testing, this is a problem. Antibody testing plays really no role here at all. So the idea that we have new tests, yes, they are going to be more helpful to us as we go in the future. But don't forget that, again, we need to be certain when we're talking about clinically ill individuals, and there alone, PCR testing still remains our, our standard. In terms of right interpretation, how do these tests operate, what they tell us or not, I won't go into that much more, but except to say that basically, just remember that when someone is infected today, I will be test negative likely for the next several days, even though I'm infected. I will potentially become potentially detectable on day three and day four. And then I may stay positive through day eight or nine or 10 post the onset of my symptoms, if I have symptoms. And that we also then have to understand that if someone was exposed today to a case, they would technically need to go into quarantine if they would. We have to assume that they could become in actually test positive sometime in the next 14 days. It's not the next day. You can't just go do a test the day after an exposure and say, okay, you're fine. And we're seeing a lot of that happen. You would need to know for those whole 14 days after exposure, is someone really truly infected? And they would have to be tested every day, basically, if they don't stay in, in isolation or quarantine, which isn't going to happen. And then finally, it is about the right action. Are we going to see students who are ill, basically, number one, getting the appropriate clinical care? And I may comment on that in just a moment. But also, the second thing is the fact that will they then take the right actions not to expose others? And this is a challenge we have. And it's one that I think we don't want to talk about often, but again, the public health agencies will tell you, this has been a very, very serious challenge. Now, let me just kind of put this into perspective. I am absolutely convinced that if you look at the population of the University of Minnesota students, that should we see, and I will comment, we will see, large outbreaks occur in that population, the vast majority of these students will not have serious life-threatening disease. We just have to be upfront about that. As was discussed earlier, about 31% of all the cases in Minnesota right now are occurring in those individuals 15 through 29 years of age. And among that group, we've had only four deaths. I say only with some pain, that's still very, much a challenge. And that's what's going to happen here. But these students have two very important aspects to that. Number one, they will transmit to others, and they will be effective at transmitting to others, and we're seeing that spillover. That's when it's into older parents, grandparents, faculty, others who are at risk, that they then have to be concerned because we see this amplification of cases and, and, and the transmission that occurs that way. And that has been shown over and over again across this country, where there is robust transmission in young adults and adolescents, we see spillover into the rest of the population. The second piece that I think we're going to be studying for a long time to come, and that is, we're seeing an increased number of what we call now long-haul patients. These are individuals who, at the time of the onset of their illness, were not severely ill, they did not require hospitalization, and we dismissed this as well, it's just another case of the flu. We are now seeing a growing proportion of these students and young adults at two to three to four months out, who are still not recovered, who are experiencing severe chronic fatigue syndrome-like symptoms. We don't understand what's going on with them. Some of them have clear and compelling neurologic challenges. And so I want to make sure students understand, this is not a benign disease that you just want to get. And I think that far too often, it's been interpreted in this population, it's not a big deal. It is a big deal. So let me just conclude by saying, first of all, when we put this program together, there was no, anyone spared anything here that we thought could help. If I thought professionally, my best professional judgment, that we could test everybody once a week, every two weeks, whatever, that would help, you know, at this point, we would have put that in place. Well, exactly what we anticipated is happening, is the fact of the matter is even pre-screen testing. And let me just read a statement for you, President Gable, I hope you don't mind. This is President Stuart Bell from the University of Alabama, who sent a letter out to all the faculty and students yesterday. And he said, despite robust testing, training, health, and safety measures we carefully and clearly implemented, there's an acceptable, unacceptable rise in positive COVID cases in our campus. That is even with their robust testing program. And so I just want to leave you with the fact that this is not a statement to have any impact on what you decide, other than just so you have the information. Given the size of our community in the Twin Cities campus, and even those other campuses around the state, we will have many cases in the days ahead if we're all together. And there'll be large outbreaks associated with gatherings, there'll be some hospitalizations, and there surely possibly could be a death in a student, and even a higher likelihood of a possible death in a faculty member. So I think that's what we're up against today and what we have to consider. So with that, I'll close and turn it back over to Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Osterholm. President Gable, I think we turn it over to you for any final comments, and then we'll open it up for our discussion.
So I have, I have two more slides.
Oh, I beg your pardon, Provost Krosen.
Thanks. So, so I know there are questions about what the financial implications are for this two-week delay. So this came from Julie Thompson about revenue losses from housing and dining for two weeks on each of the three campuses, and then some rough estimates about tuition. So each 1% reduction in total undergraduate enrollment is a tuition loss. And, and so we're, we're very conscious that this might, this decision is, you know, likely to have a financial impact on the university as well. I think you can go ahead, but I think that is probably my last slide, so I want to thank Chair Powell, the, oh, I'm sorry, one more. This one is, I'm turning back to Joan to talk about what our recommendation is going to be.
All right. Thanks, thank you, Provost Krosen. Now, and President Gable, over to you. I think she's muted.
Thank you, Chair Powell. Just very briefly, to bring things back, our intention is to anchor in safety, that we should be as safe as anyplace else, if not safer, that we have concerns about our ability to do that, that we need this time in order to be able to assess locally and nationally how the behavior and transmission is occurring, emerging standards and guidelines, and get real evidence from our peers on how different protocols are or are not working to create safe environments. We'll assess through September 7th. I want to edit this, since we prepared the slides, September 7th for the Twin Cities and Rochester, we will let the Duluth community know by September 4th, because their classes start earlier, and we want them to have that weekend of margin in order to make their decisions and communicate through whatever governance process we determine is appropriate, what our recommendation is at that time to the Board of Regents, and then to students and their families. And with that, we hand it back to you, Mr. Chair, for questions and discussion.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Thanks, thanks to all the presenters. I just want to remind my colleagues on the board that this is on the agenda for both review and action today. Before we move to a discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution related to Fall 2020 Course Modality and Move-In. Is there a motion?
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. So with that, we will turn to the discussion. Mr. Steves, can you maybe give me the roster as it, as it stacks up now of those who wish to speak?
At the moment, we have Regent Beeson.
All right. Regent Beeson, please kick us off.
Thank you, Chair Powell, and thank you, presenters. And Dr. Osterholm, you've answered all of my questions regarding testing. Well, this is about as gray of an area as we've, I've ever seen in my 12 years on the board. There are, there are strong reasons to support or oppose this. And I am a believer in generally buying time and, and, you know, the benefits that accrues to that from getting more information. But I am struggling to support the resolutions, and I'd like to sort of outline my current thinking. First, I don't think two additional weeks is really going to provide us with any conclusive evidence on which to make a better decision. There's going to be data, but it'll be light, and it's going to be early, and there'll be a lot of headlines and a lot of anecdotal evidence over the 5,000 colleges and universities. And it's going to continue to feel confusing, maybe more so. And it didn't sound like the CDC is preparing to do any, any further guidance, or there's nothing imminent in the next two weeks that would help us to make this decision better. So, and, you know, there's no standardized risk metrics. We've been looking for those, and we haven't been able to identify those. I don't think those are going to sort of magically appear. Second, I think we're shrinking this, this already truncated semester to a point where it becomes almost a contrived fall and almost a summer camp-like experience. At that point, we almost, I think, should close down the campus for the entire fall. We'd be losing five of 15 weeks if this is approved. Third, it's gone without mention that 75% of the students are living near campus or off-campus, and they're probably coming back. I haven't heard that they're not, but they're really going to drive this. We can't control that, I understand that, but that is the, that is the, they're the substantial numbers that we have. Fourth, I, there was some evidence, but I don't think it's been clear and convincing that our, why our plan, the one that we, the administration developed, and one that we approved and all the stakeholders approved, can't begin in the manner that we conceived it. We're still in compliance with state and federal guidance. We've completed all the preparations, as far as I know. We have more beds available for quarantine than we anticipated. We have 1,000, I don't know exactly how many. We have better medical treatment for the virus than we did in the spring, the reduction in mortality in ICU, but this is really amazing. And we're, our great public health and medical people have just done such a great job, and on the treatment side, that's sort of an untold story. We have more online learning options. We did contemplate a high number of infected students. This is, the outbreaks really are not a surprise. And we knew that we'd have to manage through the situation with different mitigation efforts, including quarantine. And we're sort of, we're not going to have a risk-free, you know, situation here. So, and then, you know, I'm unimpressed when I hear, you know, the Michigan State decision as to why, you know, we have to make our own decision. And there's, I think the staffs, frankly, Provost, you've been very selective about the schools you've chosen to sort of cite as ones that are, you know, retreating or changing. But there's 5,000 universities and colleges, and most, and I haven't seen anything with our Big Ten schools, I know that everybody's gone to hybrid, but I haven't seen any evidence that the other 13 or 12 schools have delayed the move-in, really separating out this move-in from the how we teach. I'm completely comfortable with going all online for the next two, first two weeks or maybe longer. But that's, that should be considered separately, I think, than the decision to, to move in. And Notre Dame, my understanding is those students have not been asked to leave campus. They're managing through that. They moved to all online. But, so I think it, the industry is all over the board. And in two weeks, I really don't know that we're going to have a better decision. So I would rather sort of close the campus down right now, or get the students, and this is my preference, to have them move in as scheduled and move forward. Thanks, everybody, and thanks so much for the staff. Provost, the, what you've had to go through since you've arrived here, it's just, and the president, this is really an unbelievable. And, you know, you have to, you have to laugh at some point and have to, you know, because... because there's just no other way to sort of put this in context. So thanks for all your work, everybody.
All right. Regent Beeson, thank you for your comments and some of the questions. President Gable or any of the presenters, any thoughts, reactions, responses to Regent Beeson's points? You know, I think the critical, one of the critical ones being, you know, what can we, what can we learn? And what kind of action, you know, would that potentially trigger?
Thank you, Chair Powell. So just a couple of details. So Michigan, in reference to the Big Ten, Michigan State, as we know, has gone all online. Maryland has allowed move-in but gone totally on online. And like a couple of other universities, like the University of Pittsburgh, is in a total lockdown, which means the students are in their dorm rooms. There are no activities. They are not eating in dining centers. They don't have their RA. They aren't doing things in their hallways. They're just sleeping in their dorm rooms and taking their classes in their dorm rooms. I want to express the difference between normal move-in and move-in in this circumstance. Rutgers has already gone non-residential and is 100% online. So those are just a couple of the Big Ten examples in reference to Regent Beeson's remarks. But with regard to whether we're ready for treatment, I think this is a very important point to understand because we do have the benefit of literally the best care possible. But it's, I think there, we need some dimensionality around that for your understanding. So with that, I would suggest calling on Dr. Tolar to describe campus and community medical care.
All right. Thank you, President Gable. Dr. Tolar.
Chair Powell, President Gable, Regents, thank you for gathering around this phenomenally important issue. And the one that I think is a clear example of the multilayered and articulate and sophisticated leadership of this university. I will speak to anything you want me to talk about. But first, I want to address the readiness. So we have been, as many of you so kindly commented on, we have been ahead of the curve. We have been seen, you know, as a information and action hub for COVID-19 nationally and internationally. And we have changed the predictions that have been made in March about many thousands of Minnesotans dying of the disease and the, the system, the healthcare system being overwhelmed, having no ventilators, not having enough ventilators, not enough aesthetic care, enough intensivists, beds and so forth. And this didn't happen. And the reason I would like us to recall that, it didn't happen because of what President Gable and you have enabled us to do, which is to prepare for this in a cohorting hospital, in designing the trials and designing the care pathways that have, as Regent Beeson so kindly pointed out, we have about one-third of the mortality in the ICU compared to New York or Seattle. We have certainly one of the best treatments available. And we do have a cohorting hospital. Now, this is not to say that we are ready for what's coming next because we have to be agile and nimble and really adapt in a very real time. If you look at the, you know, I did a lot, you know, with my team, just a simple modeling. You know, you take about 40,000 students, you will have about 1,250 that will be positive. And of these, about 380 will be false positive. So that's the first problem. The bigger problem is, so you would have to have quarantine rooms for 1,250 people if you were starting with this denominator. Now, the bigger problem is that you will end up with 290 roughly that are false negative. What that means is that these people will have, especially in the young adulthood, I think, will quickly jump to false assurance that they are, that they are fine. Yet they are infected and they will be your spreaders, you know, in the, in the community at the university or near the university or anywhere they go. How this translates into the, into the logistics, you know, I can go in great detail, but I'm just going to stay with what President Gable asked me to do, which is stay with the medical. So about 3%, if you assume the, if you use the Iowa State, you know, the first testing, the 2.88% prevalence, that's, you know, comparable to where we are going to be most likely. You will have about 3% of people admitted in that, you know, young age group. About 0.4% will end up in the ICU. And there's a less than 1% chance of dying at that, at that category. But I'd like to be clear that what it means that for the faculty, staff and other people that will interact with them, and I have intentionally taken the group between 16 and 64 years of age, 20%, 19% to 20% will end up hospitalized, 7% in the ICU and 3% will die. So people die all the time. People get sick all the time. I take it, you know, that's my day job, you know, that, that, that's what we trained for and we, we are prepared to, to provide for them. But I want to make absolutely sure that people understand, you know, that as the societal decisions, you know, in the, you know, governance order or the university arrangements that President Gable and her team have put forward worked, you know, we also have an opportunity to have a circumstance whereby we can control some of the numbers, you know, that are pretty clear. Mr. Chair, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Tolar. Mr. Steves, could you maybe give me the current list of those who would like to speak?
Yeah, we have a long list, Mr. Chair, but the next up is Regent Shu and then Regent Mayron.
All right. Regent Shu, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everybody, for attending this meeting. It is a very, we have a very consequential decision to make today. I'd like to start out by just asking a couple of questions before I make my comments. First of all, as actually point of clarification or information, I, I wanted to bring forward a motion, a resolution for us to have a dashboard. One of the things that bothers me most about our plan is that we are not going to be releasing our own information. And I would like to find a way to have, have us have a dashboard, whether we vote on it or whether or not the administration agrees to produce a dashboard. And this is with our own data with an asterisk that says this is not all the stuff happening on campus, only what we know about what's happening on campus. And I understand that data is available. It has not been given to us so far. I think, I think there has been some information released, maybe to journalists through Data Practices Act requests, but I, I don't feel comfortable not knowing what's going on on campus.
President Gable, would you like to respond to Regent Shu's comments on dashboard?
Yes, thank you, Chair Powell. Regent Shu, I'm going to defer to Jill DeBoer to answer and explain where we are with the dashboard.
Right. Ms. DeBoer.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, Chair Powell, Regent Shu and members of the board. What I'd like to do is just give you some background about the discussions we've had among our senior leaders and our public health officials and public health leaders on campus about this issue of the dashboard. I think most of you, I'm sure, are following our state health department dashboards. States across the United States are having dashboards to look at different information. The state health department dashboard is actually one of my daily things that I will look at. I just looked at it a minute ago because they released the figures just, just a few minutes ago about numbers of cases each day. I know I follow the numbers of cases each day. I'm sure Dr. Tolar follows the people in hospitals and the deaths. To make a dashboard very effective, you need to have population-based data. And so the state health department can do that because by state rule, all cases of COVID are reported to the state health department by both the clinics that take the samples and the labs that do the work. Many universities across the country have issued public-facing dashboards. There, many of them are really beautiful looking. But one of the concerns that we had in our public health group is that we will never have population-based data. And that is because the case information that we have is really limited to those people who test at our clinic. And we know from anecdotal information, both in our own university and other universities, that our students are not necessarily testing with our clinic. They can test anywhere. In Minnesota, we have a great, great access to testing and you don't have to go to your own provider to receive testing for COVID. And so we know anecdotally that our students are being tested at Penethen Healthcare. They're being tested at M Health locations, particularly in the Twin Cities. And so we just need to be clear that when we're monitoring the data that we have, it's not population-based and it will be, we will underestimate greatly the number of cases in our students. We are and our employees. We are working with the state health department, all of the universities and colleges in Minnesota to try to get better information. There, the state health department is attempting to gather some information from cases in a certain age range, asking them if they're affiliated with a university in Minnesota or college. And they'll try to feed that information to us. But that also will be partial information because public health is the participatory game, as Mike mentioned as well. And people need to participate in both the testing portion and the case investigation. And so if our students are asked if they're affiliated with the university and they say no, which I think many of them will say no, we don't get that data either. Other universities have also shown things like the number of quarantine beds they have, the number of isolation beds they have. We certainly will monitor that information. But you have to keep in mind that these, these rooms are being used for 14 days and then they're available again. So that point in time number can be very misleading. You may have many, many beds filled today, but if they're all being released tomorrow, then you'll have many, many open beds. And so we certainly do have information. We are monitoring it with our team. We have chosen not to launch a web-based dashboard, but just know that we are actively monitoring the information we have. And we are working with our county health department partners across the state where our camps are located and our state health department to try to get our hands on the best possible information. It's just not as simple as some people may think in, in the community in terms of what these test numbers mean.
Okay. Thank you, Director DeBoer. Regent Shu, any follow-up on that point?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all of the things that were mentioned there. However, I remain unconvinced that we should not be as transparent as possible about the data that we do have. And it sounds like we do have a tremendous amount of data and we should make that available not only to ourselves, but to the public, to the students, to the parents, to all the people who are interested in what's going on at the University of Minnesota. So I guess I'll ask the question again. It, it sounds like the administration does not want to provide this information to us. So I would ask my colleagues to support a motion and I'm not sure how to bring that forward. Mr. Steves.
Regent Shu, could we, could we leave it now that you've, you've posed the question and with the intent to possibly make, make a motion with this regard? And I assure you, I'll, I'll come back to it, but I want to get to the other points as well right now.
Okay. That, that would be terrific, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So my other points are, it has come to me that there are different rules, I would say maybe policies on how to treat on-campus versus off-campus. And I want to echo Mr. Regent Beeson's comments. I believe that, you know, knowing how our, our campus works in terms of the dorm residents, are primarily freshmen, maybe a couple of sophomores, but hardly any juniors or seniors unless they're international students. I would say about 80% of our students are off-campus, either in fraternities and sororities, the co-op or other housing or apartment units. And I think those are the students that we really have to worry about. We, we need to be concerned because those students also need to have a place to quarantine. They also need to have a place to isolate. And all, all we've said so far is that you need to make a plan. Well, the fraternities and sororities especially, they're, they've been trying to make a plan for months and they've apparently not been able to get what they're looking for, which is some help in isolating students. When you have, you know, 30, perhaps 30, up to 30 people living in a house and one person tests positive, I think they were originally told that everybody had to be quarantined or everybody had to move out, everyone else had to move out. So I think that's a little bit unrealistic and we need to figure out a way of providing space. And as Regent Beeson said, we do have a tremendous amount of dormitory space at, at the moment that could be used for isolation. In the past, I think we've also been told that we have hotels and we own half a hotel, the days in. And then, of course, there are other, two or three other hotels around campus that probably aren't being fully occupied right now or during the fall. So I, I guess that's one question as to how we are going to deal with the off-campus community as, as they are a very large part of our, our Twin Cities community.
Thank you, Regent Shu. President Gable or any of the presenters want to comment on this area of off-campus student needs and overall availability of isolation capacity?
Yes, Chair Powell, I'd actually recommend we break this response into two. Jill DeBoer can speak to who is responsible for people who live in Minneapolis, which is where most of our off-campus students live, not everybody, of course, but how this works. And then Mike Bertelson can speak to what our actual on-campus capacity, what, what we have available for isolation and quarantine for the board's understanding. So with that, I would start with Jill and then turn it to Mike Bertelson.
All right. Director DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair Powell, members of the board. I will just say that I presented to you in your last meeting about COVID, about our layered public health approach, there were 10 layers. It's important for you to know that all of those 10 layers will stay in existence no matter what decision is made about the fall. Because as was pointed out, we do have students in our communities. I, like President Gable, have two golden gophers. Oh, hers aren't gophers, sorry, but I have two golden gophers, one who graduated in the spring and one who's a sophomore. And so I'm moving her into the Dinkytown area. So I'm very aware of the student populations in our neighborhoods and they will be there regardless of our decision. So I think this point about isolation and quarantine is a, is an important one for all of the students in the community. We are working very hard, as Mike Bertelson will mention, to make sure that those students in our residence halls have spaces for isolation and quarantine. Based on the numbers we are seeing from our other peers and the numbers that we can project just as epidemiologists looking at this virus, we need to make sure we have enough space for those residence hall students. And it's just, it's a math problem. We, we, we just have to have enough for them. And so it is correct, we've been working with other community partners, like the agri-community and the rental community in the rental properties around our campus. It's important to note, though, that in Minnesota, public health is responsible, government public health is responsible to make sure that people in isolation and quarantine have the support that they need. And so we've been talking with MDH, City of Minneapolis, Penaban County and Ramsey County to make sure that we understand the services that they have available for people who may need isolation and quarantine support. Every case in Minnesota will be interviewed by a case investigator and they will ask them if they understand the isolation parameters. Often it has to do with a private bedroom, a private bath. And then they'll make sure that they have what they need for both their isolation and then the quarantine of people in their living arrangement. And it is true that it's, that often what we can do in a group setting is move the isolated person out and individuals who need to quarantine can do that together. There's very different parameters for each case and public health works with each case to make sure they have what they need. And then if they don't have what they need, to, to provide that through the public health system.
So Director, Director DeBoer, if I could maybe jump in, do we, do we have, you know, a range or an estimated range of how much isolation capacity we could need across the campus in the Twin Cities, just as an example? Do we have, do we have an estimated range? And is the, and do we have the capacity available to cover that? I know that maybe is a simplistic way. I know that maybe is a simplistic way, but I think it might give us some perspective on where we are.
Sure. And I have been working with Vice President Bertelson and his team. And I think I'll ask him to answer the, the questions about our capacity based on what CDC is recommending that we have available.
Okay, Director Bertelson.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Chair Powell and Regents. We currently have a plan for on-campus residence halls for about 407 rooms to be set aside for isolation and quarantine. That equals about nine, almost 9% of our undergraduates with housing contracts that are in our residence halls. The Department of Health had recommended that we have between 2 and 1/2 to 5% capacity to meet our students on campus. Obviously, those ratios, the numbers are shifting a little bit as students make decisions about their contract. But that's, though we have more vacant beds than that, that's the number of rooms that we are able to set aside for isolation and quarantine to meet the, the rules, because obviously we won't, we're trying to maintain a whole room and not just a bed vacancy. So we have larger vacancy, but our plan today is 407 isolation and quarantine rooms for students who have a housing contract with the university.
Okay, thank you. And we believe based on the, you have to tell me, but it sounds like based on the federal guidance, that would be, you know, we would be, we would well over-index what's recommended.
Regent, Chair Powell, yes, we, yeah, the State Department of Health recommends 2 and 1/2 to 5% of capacity of your students in, in your managed housing and we are approximately 9% at this point in time. We, that may increase as we see how many people choose to stay with us, but yes, we're well above that number.
Okay. All right. What I'd like to do now is, Regent Shu, I think you have a comment. And if you could make that quickly, because I want to move on to other Regents. So I'll give you one last quick shot here and then we've got to move on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just, just to close that loop there, so the answer I was looking for is, you know, whether or not we're going to help off-campus students. And it sounds like we're going to rely on the county to help them and we're not going to provide university resources to help those students. Is that, is that correct?
Director DeBour, I think that's to you or?
I'll chime in. It's not that we're not helping off-campus students. We are providing all the services for students, no matter where they live, except isolation and quarantine, which is provided by the county and according to county protocols. And I, I would mention, Mr. Chair, that we're over-indexing against recommendation. So were all of our peers and their beds are filling faster than what the indices projected before student arrivals. This is part of the factor for our discussion today.
Okay, thank you, President Gable. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next person on the list and that is Regent Mayron.
Thank you very much. I have one clarifying question, then I will make a couple of comments. And my clarifying question has to do with the number of individuals that would be currently affected by our decision. If we were to decide to adopt the recommendation and move back the move-in dates into residential halls for the Twin Cities campus, Duluth and Rochester, how many students are of that undergraduate group are we affecting? That's my question for clarification and I'll make a few comments.
President Gable, would you kind of navigate to get us the answer to that question?
I'm going to send that one to Provost Croson, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair Powell, Regent Mayron. So at the moment, we have 4,600 students scheduled to move into residential housing. Most of them would be delayed by two weeks, not all, as was mentioned before, there'll be some exceptions. In the Twin Cities, we also have about 15,000 undergrad students who have an in-person or blended class scheduled. And about 8,000 of those are in classes we categorize as laboratory or experimental. So as a rough guess, after we applied some criteria for what would be permitted to continue in person, I would say, you know, less than 1,000 of them might still have their course meet in-person or blended for the first two weeks. So there'd be a large number of students who would have two weeks of distance education that they wouldn't otherwise have.
Thank you. So I, my comments are, I have two comments and then a follow-up question. And what I'm hearing and what I've been reading and in terms of all the communications that we have, Regents have received over the last few days, once this proposal came out, is this is an issue about the impact of where individuals will live, approximately 4,600 or less of them during this two, two-week period. By and large, all of the community, I shouldn't say all, but virtually all of the communications that we receive from parents and students, they were objecting to the recommendation that the move-in be delayed, but they were not objecting to the recommendation about going to virtual or remote learning for this two-week period. So I do think it is important, as we consider the proposal by the administration, that we vote separately on the move-in issue versus the remote learning issue for which, as I understand it, parents and students were not objecting. That's number one. Number two, many of the comments that we received from parents and students talked about the willingness of a parent on behalf of their child or the student to undertake this risk, that they understood the risk of moving on campus and the risk of perhaps contracting the coronavirus and they were willing to undertake the risk. I think it is absolutely imperative, however, for us as Regents to talk about this as risk to the community. They are not just taking on a risk for themselves. Any risk they decide to take, and this was borne out by the statistics that were discussed by Dr. Osterholm and Dr. Toler, is a risk to the community. Every individual who contracts this is going to meet other people and likely not know that they are infecting somebody else, because many of them are asymptomatic. So when we talk about risk and we talk about our obligation, we have to be talking about it in terms of risk to not only the university community, but the community at large, parents, grandparents, faculty, all of the individuals, employees, that an infected individual could come into contact with. My, those are my two general comments. My question is this for the administration, and that is if we were to reject the proposal on the residential housing and that is allow students to move in on the dates originally planned, what is the downside to proceeding in that fashion? And then over the next two weeks or period of time, collecting the data that we want to collect and make a decision, whether it's one week, two weeks down the line to change our decision, perhaps to go to entire remote learning, perhaps to lock down students into their room, perhaps to send them home. What's the downside of doing it that way versus what you were proposing, which is delaying the move-in at this time?
Thank you, Regent Mayron. President Gable, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Regent Mayron, members of the board. The, the reason that we are presenting the proposal in this way, delaying the move-in in the first place, is because what other schools have had to do when their surges occurred after students were already on campus is either lock them down or send them home. I want to be clear that when these schools have moved to all online instruction, they've also moved to very restricted motion on campus. So these students are paying full freight for housing or whatever cost is being incurred for housing while being very restricted in their ability to leave the housing. So many of our parents are envisioning that if their child moves in, everything would be normal but for class instruction. And that's simply not the case. It's utterly abnormal. This entire process is abnormal. And their students would be in their dorm, but with no activities, no big block M picture on the football field, no walking around and doing welcome week activities, no congregation at all. That's what we're talking about and paying for it. Whereas what we're doing now is saving them the cost, saving them the travel without having to lock them in their room essentially while they're on campus or have them come and have what happened at Chapel Hill happen where they then immediately turn around virtually immediately and go home and have twice the travel expense and the frustration. There are no good choices here. There's no choice here that is crisp and obvious. If there were one, we would be offering it to you and we wouldn't be having this debate. So there are a lot of reasonable points of view around what's the safest thing to do, what's the best thing to do, what's the way in which this is least disruptive for these students who've already given up so very much, which we fully appreciate. This is the one that we think is the intersection in terms of cost fairness, opportunity disruption. If the board suggests something otherwise, then obviously the administration will execute to the best of its ability on whatever it is, is the collective wisdom of the board.
All right. Thank you, President Gable. Thank you, Regent Mayron. Mr. Steves, can you give me the next handful of speakers, please? Or questioners?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Regents Kinyanya, Swigum and then Rocha.
All right, Regent Kinyanya.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, presenters and everyone joining us. First of all, I want to thank every student, parent, community member that emailed us. I was speaking with another Regent who's been here much longer than I and they said this is the most communication they've received on any issue. And I want to acknowledge, you know, those emails and everything we were hearing with petition and the, and the correspondence with student, student government leaders. And I think what I heard in those is that the, the, the timing, the timings, you know, is really what hurt a lot of people and it stings. And, and this is all true, you know, not intentionally or anything. And another email, a student said it was essentially bait and switch. Not, that's not what it is, but I'm acknowledging that that's what it feels like. And that, you know, that feeling is, is very real. Particularly saw a lot of emails from UMD students and parents, because that move-in is a lot sooner or was scheduled to be a lot sooner than the Twin Cities campus. And, and while I'm happy to see that this proposal still includes prorated housing and refunds as necessary, we do know that the expenses have been spent already in, in preparation to move in, whether it's buying materials or travel plans and, and there's an emotional cost. I, I just, when we think about not just this decision, but the pandemic at large, we have to remember that getting this wrong means people dying, right? You know, we have the slide with the financial impacts. We know we're, people's college experience is at stake, but that's not it. We have to bring it back to that it's a pandemic and the currency is lives here. And what, what steps or what inconveniences are we willing to bear to save those? They might not be university students, as Regent Mayron pointed out. And as Dr. Osterholm was talking about the transmission, that while this population might be less susceptible, we as a university, university community and our students have to consider what role we play in, in being carriers and, and, and what role we play in transmitting this to, to not just faculty, but also to the, the, you know, the pizza delivery person and, and all the other people that we interact with, especially on the campuses that are in metropolitan areas. One email, another email that I got from a parent, mother of two UMD students, she said, everyone has become their own expert in this. And that's, and it's tempting to do that. And I think everyone has tried to do that. And that's something I'm going to try not to do, not to, not to make myself infectious disease expert. Despite my feelings, my thoughts and everything, and hearing Director DeBour, Dr. Osterholm, Dr. Toler, identifying that they support this proposal and saying that the administration and the teams looking at this need more time, you know, and reflecting, I imagine I would have to have a really good reason, a reason I'm very confident in, to disagree with that and say, no, I feel that these students are safe or at least safer than they would be back in their homes. There's a risk everywhere to, to disagree with that. And I, I think, I think we just have to, I think this is really an opportunity to, 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 to trust the experts. I'm not saying we can debate the, we can debate the, the governance of it, the higher education piece of it, but not the health of it. I, I would also add be prepared for my very bad analogy here. But if, if, you know, if a theme park has concerns about its ride, the riders don't get to waive the, you know, the responsibility and say, we're confident and we know the risks and get on it. You shut it down, you take a look at it and you open it if it's safe. I think, I think from what I'm hearing, I'm losing confidence in whether or not we'd be able to do this at all. I, I'm not saying that's what's been said, but that's what I'm starting to hear. And I think what families and students would appreciate is certainty. I think that's what everyone would appreciate. There's not much of it in this pandemic. But whatever level we can add to them would be appreciated. I think Regent Beeson alluded to this. But the only thing worse in this situation we're in and this conversation we're having is if we were to move them in and then ask them to leave later. Or if we were to move them in and lock them down, as President Gable was talking about, in, in experience that's nothing like an on-campus college experience, that really essentially quarantine them in the residence hall. I think that's the only worst scenario. I would ask the administration, as, as you're planning and looking at this, if there's an inkling that this is going to be shut down completely or moved online, I would almost say we do that today. I'm not, that's not a motion or anything like that. But I, I think families and parents and students would appreciate just the certainty, whether or not they like the decision. And, you know, and if we were able to offer that at all, I think that would be helpful. I, I guess I, I look forward to, to hearing the rest of the conversation and, but I, I still think at the end of the day, it's, it's our responsibility. You know, despite the risk that people may or may not be willing to take as, as Regent, Regent Mayron pointed out, it's not just about risks to yourself, it's risk to the community. And I think, I think I would have to defer to the Dr. Osterhoms, the Director DeBours and the Dr. Tolers on this issue. And I, I will be supporting the, the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Regent Kinyanya, for those comments. We'll move on now to Regent Swigum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had to quickly get unmuted there. And, and my thanks also to President Gable and to our Provost for the things that she has done and they have both done in preparation for, for this fall. I, I guess I would have a couple of questions first, Mr. Chairman, and then, then a statement to the resolution. My question, I guess both of them would probably be to Dr. Osterholm if he's willing. Dr. Osterholm, like many in this country or in this, at least in the state, I follow your words very, very closely. And I think maybe two or three times this spring, maybe towards summer, early summer, you said that this virus is going to be with us until, I think you said 60 or 70% of the population has been affected. I believe those were your words. Dr. Osterholm, if that be true, why don't we just get along with life and just go on? And, and, and consider that we move forward, recognizing that this virus is going to be with us until that 60 or 7% gets infected and the consequences thereof?
Dr. Osterholm? Yeah, Mr. Chair, Representative Swigum. In fact, I am a much more optimistic man than all of that. And I say that because of the fact that we have two ways to get to what is 50 to 70% of the population having protection, either through infection or through a vaccine to slow virus transmission down. And what our whole approach in public health has been is to try to slow it down as much as possible without hurting society in general. And that was the point of an op-ed piece that Neokash Carey, the president of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis and I had in the New York Times two weeks ago, was what we're, our goal is to get there and then have vaccines save us, so that in fact, we don't have to suffer all these deaths. Let me just, just remind this group just very quickly, because this is something I think that's lost often. In March 1st, on March 1st, this disease, COVID-19, was not in the top 100 causes of death in this country. For three weeks in April, it was the number one cause of death in this country. We have not had that happen since 1918, where infectious disease did that. And the potential, and that clearly there were high-risk individuals who were impacted, long-term care, but we saw what happened in New York and so forth. And as Dr. And as Dr. Toler said, we've gotten much better treatment, which is important. And that is, this surely has helped us out. But what we're worried about is the case numbers increasing. On the height of the transmission, in mid-April, we're at 32,000 cases a day. By Memorial Day, we got it down to 22,000 cases a day, and we thought we'd won, gave up basically. And then look what happened. It went to 65,000 cases a day by late July. Then we tightened up again a bit, and now we're down into the high 40s. We're going to probably hit the high 40s and maybe lower and stay there for a while. But I can tell you with, I believe with absolute certainty, this whole young adult age group, students around the country, is going to be an explosion over the next three to four weeks. And then we're going to hit the indoor air season, and we're going to look back and say, "Boy, I sure wish we were back at 50,000 or 60,000 cases again a day." So that's the challenge, is we do have a real problem. But we can get there if we can limit transmission, and I think a vaccine or vaccines will be forthcoming. I can't say this year, but by early next year, I think it's really possible we will have those. That's what will get us to that 50% to 70% without having the pain and suffering of the cases.
Thank you, Dr. Osterholm. Regent Swigum, I think you've got another question.
Yes, and Dr. Osterholm, thank you for that. I accept and I understand, I think what your answer was, we're buying time to get to that vaccine towards the end of the year, hopefully early next year, to get to that 60%, 70% level to end the virus. I accept that. My second question would be one that I think you've already answered, and that'd be young persons, you know, the student freshmen and the sophomores that are coming back to class. You know, generally speaking, they are not the population that is most at risk. But I think your answer to that was they're most at risk of transmitting the disease to others. And I think I heard you say that in your recommendation or in your opening statements. And that makes sense to me, that they're, while not specifically them being at risk, a 20-year-old freshman student coming into the university, the transmission to others is of the greatest risk, and I accept your answer there. Now, just an aside real quickly before I get to my comment, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Osterholm, I would like to have you call me sometime and let me know why you thought a Sturgis Bike Rally would almost be a health end of the world, a end of the world coming to our country, but the same chaos, type of chaos in protests around the country were not up to the same health concern. I will not go further than that, but I would like a call from you sometime regarding that.
Our Director Osterholm, we're going to stay on modality and move in. So Regent Swigum, you're...
Last comment, my last comment, Mr. Chairman, would be as I approach this resolution. Members and colleagues, when I first heard of the two-week pause last week, I was very hesitant, as the President knows, very hesitant and even negative to the proposal. However, after listening to experts and listening to those who are making plans at our university for the school this fall, I've come to these very three quick considerations that helped me to support the resolution. The first is that we are, by doing this resolution, by doing this pause, one, we are clearly taking steps, clearly taking steps to protect our staff and our professors. We're clearly taking the steps to do that. Second of all, and I think this was referred to by Regent Mayron, I would much rather do the pause and the chaos that that provides rather than to start school and potentially, at least potentially, within a couple or three weeks, stop school like maybe some other institutions are doing. And I think that this would be the better of the two options. And thirdly, I think we're just buying time to see what's happening around the country and in other institutions and other schools. By the way, those of you who are of my age will remember that this isn't the first time that we have significant chaos in higher education institutions around the country. If you remember back to 1970, maybe Ken and I are the only ones who remember back. But 1970, with the Vietnam War and with the shootings at Kent State, I believe it was May of 1970, there was chaos in all higher education institutions around the country. In fact, I think we probably stopped school and most of them in early May of that year. So it was not the first time we've been there. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll just tell you I support the resolution.
Thank you, Regent Swigum. Thank you for your questions and comments. Regent Rocha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had to change access. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, first, could I get a clarification? Regent Mayron had made a comment about separating the issue of the access to the residence halls versus changing the modality of the classes. I don't know if Regent Mayron was seeking to move to do so, or if it was a suggestion, or whether that is before the board.
I don't think Regent Mayron moved that. She raised that idea. Regent Mayron, would you like to quickly jump in?
Yes, I raised it as an idea. I'm waiting to see, as my colleagues make their comments, whether it is needed to separate them out or not. I am told that if I want to do that, I would make a motion to divide. I guess there are three bullets that are part of the resolution, and I would make a motion to divide the three bullets so that they are addressed separately. And I am told, this is by Jason Langworthy, that it's called a division of a question. It requires a second, is not debatable, is not debatable. So it does require a majority vote. So I'm prepared to do that if I thought it was necessary, but I was waiting to see how other regions were commenting and seeing whether, in fact, there is disagreement particularly on the bullet about the delay of the residential move-in. As I said, I'm not hearing disagreement or really anybody focusing on the issue of delaying the method of the modality of learning to be remote learning for two weeks.
Okay, thank you, Regent Mayron. Regent Rocha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just was seeking to kind of focus my comments if we were going to deal, but I'll cover the range. This is, as pointed out by Regent Kenyanya, this is a big public dialogue, and which seems kind of remarkable after six months in this posture that two weeks would be of such significance, which begs its own question, but I'll leave that to the later comments. You know, receiving volumes of commentary from parents, from students. I spent the better part of my drive back from Fort Leavenworth responding to questions from State Representative Jim Nash about what is, what the university is contemplating and how this will move forward for people that have asked him questions. And I'm sure others have heard from him and others, and a lot of folks are very interested in what, how we're going to handle this. You know, are we a leader in this regard? And what kind of value we're providing to students? So this is very important. If I could, Mr. Chair, I would like to ask a couple, a few questions of Dr. Osterholm so I have a little better understanding of some of the underlying components.
Please do.
Thank you. And I understand, you know, I always wince a little bit when I see comments like, you know, "Everyone shouldn't become their own expert" because it seems to be somewhat of a debate closer that average folks don't have the opportunity to understand and comprehend these matters. And as we've seen over six months, I think even the experts are working as hard as they can to understand this. I don't know that we've reached a perfection in that regard, but I do think we're very blessed to have Dr. Osterholm with us. And in fact, I would point out that Dr. Toler and Dr. Osterholm, when they briefed us back in March, virtually everything they said has come to pass. So I have a great deal of faith there. Dr. Osterholm, if you'd be willing, so we kind of talk about this as though it's students in dorms versus perfection. And if we don't allow them in the dorms, that somehow we've avoided risk. Where would you, where do you anticipate the students would remain if they are denied entry to the dorms during that two-week period? Would they be a risk for others, including relatives and families? Or is there an advantage to being in a cohort of folks with, you know, virtually no statistical risk from this, from the virus during that period? Again, versus being out in the community with elderly relatives, family members, you know, working at convenience stores and all the other things that we find people in that age cohort doing?
Dr. Osterholm.
Mr. Chair, Regent Rocha. Let me just break this apart. There's really two separate issues here. One is where do students get infected and what might be the... The second part is where might they transmit the virus? Right now in Minnesota, we have 47 separate outbreaks, all associated with bars right now, just in the past few months. We're seeing an increasing number of activities that involve things like weddings, funerals, social gatherings, et cetera, where, again, across the board, we're seeing people get infected. But most of these events have involved young adults, where the transmission has been acquired. So from that perspective, I'm not suggesting the dorms necessarily where they will become infected, although in close settings like that, you surely could expect that. In terms of where they transmit, that's just wherever they go in the community. They'll transmit to others on campus. They will transmit to wherever they go. So I'm not here to argue or to debate whether they should do it for housing or whether what the school's next approach should be to this. I'm just here to tell you that we're going to see a lot of cases over the course of the next few months, regardless of what we do. And the challenge will be is how do we limit or minimize the impact here at the university, the potential for transmission to others, and what's our role and responsibility? I mean, we clearly need to help our, have our students help us be part of the responsible solution to this and avoiding these kinds of big social gatherings, which have now become front-page news, which have now become the scene of so many TV footage reports, you know? How do we help stop that? I don't think that's something that's about the dorm. That's just something about being an individual in that age group at this time.
Thanks, Dr. Osterholm. Regent Rocha.
Yeah, I've got a little bit of follow-up dialogue here. So I appreciate, I appreciate that response. Again, after six months of what, of the current state of things, you know, understanding how the two-week difference between causing the change for this two weeks, you know, to what extent do we have any level of confidence that in two weeks, things are going to dramatically change in, for this cohort versus if they are on campus and they are able to have guidance and there is some ability for the university to, you know, instill in our students the need to take this seriously, as well as the fact that, you know, there are executive order limitations on those kinds of gatherings and so on. But within that, within that context, you know, we sort of shot right past the risk to this group and talked about this being a community risk as a whole. And again, unless we're, unless we're going to somehow tie these, them down wherever they happen to live, it seems like they still continue to be, you know, actors within that respect of being able to transmit it. Although now, instead of to a low-risk population of their classmates, they're going to be in the general population. But my question, next question is, you mentioned that there were four possible COVID-related deaths. I don't know if this is for freshmen, if it's just in our college age. What would we expect, you know, for, you know, 18-year-olds, which is, I think, going to be the 18, 19 will be the vast majority of dorm dwellers, without, you know, assuming no significant underlying health issue? What would be a typical mortality rate from all things? Whether it's meningitis, whether it's heart issues? What would we expect to see, you know, because you see those tragic stories every year of a college student that passes away? What would we normally see in a year?
Dr. Osterholm.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Regent Rocha, that's a very good question. I don't have that data, those data for you at this point, but I think the point you make is a good one. Yes, they are going to occur, whether it be automobile accidents, cancers, whatever might occur in that age group. I think you're right. I think the challenge we have is that when you are in that younger age group and it impacts you, again, I come back to, I think, the point that Regent Mayron so thoughtfully articulated, it's the risk of the transmission to the community. That's what's really concerning. And we do have data from other states, particularly Florida, Georgia, Arizona, where young adults were a major source. Now, that doesn't mean that the university is responsible. It just wants you to understand that we're going to see a lot of cases over the course of the next few weeks and months, and it's just the university's issue of how are we going to deal with that?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah, one last one, Regent Rocha, because I do want to get to the rest of the board.
Then it becomes a compound question. Mr. Dr. Osterholm, so again, the challenge with that is that it's not as though if they're not in the dorms, these people don't exist. They're still going to be in the community. They're still going to be interacting with their peers and so on. It's just that it's going to be a broader range, including people in high-risk categories more than if they were on campus, or so it would seem. But also, you know, I'm going to ask a couple of points here. I'm wondering what the mental health analysis has been in all of this. We know that studies of, you know, recent reports are that mental health issues are on a significant increase right now in this, in this population. And that, you know, certainly coming off of a very dramatic change in expectations in the spring for this group, that there are, these are real concerns. And I'm wondering how that has been processed by you and by other experts in this analysis for determining to make this change? These are, you know, as Regent Kenyanya said, he would not want to have responsibility for mortality that would arise from a university decision. I would suggest that they could arise from a number of decisions that we may make on this issue. In that, you know, by changing this in this, in this way, do we have enough confidence that the trade-off is worth the potential risk, I think, to a population that has, I think, already kind of borne more than its share of challenges, especially being such a low-risk population? But...
Is that a question, is that your question, Regent Rocha? Because I want to give Dr. Osterholm the opportunity to respond if he can, and then I need to move on.
All right, well, then it's not a question, Mr. Chair. So to address the issue of going all online, this is, it's a tough conversation. You know, I understand that the administration has spoken with a lot of folks within the organization, within the institution about some of these changes. I understand that there was never, that no faculty were being compelled to teach in person if they didn't feel comfortable doing it. And it seems to me that that's a respectful response to allow people to teach as they would prefer, and I would still maintain support for that. But to the extent that we're going to an all-online, I think certainly my personal sense is that there's a different value in an all-online opportunity versus an in-person or even hybrid, for that matter, opportunity for teaching. And that I believe that we should be considering a significant reduction in tuition. I mean, we made a decision on the basis of health to alter our intercollegiate athletics operation, well, the administration did, and that exposes, I would propose to about nine figures in risk for the institution. I would think a similar recognition of the change in value that we're providing to students if we do go all-online, and particularly if we maintain all-online, I think would be appropriate. And then I understand, Mr. Chair, we're going to talk about the dashboard after this.
Yes. Thank you, Regent Rocha.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify for Regent Mayron and others. So I don't support the proposal on either bullet, but in particular, as to, I think the most important one at this point is, based on what we have offered to parents and students, I think that we should be allowing anyone who wants to. In fact, I'm quite compelled by the petition that we provided. Students who want to remain out and receive a refund should be permitted to do that. Students that are planning to, expecting to move in should be allowed to move in on time. And I would prefer to allow faculty who are comfortable teaching in person to continue to do so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Regent Rocha. Mr. Steves, the next group of questioners?
Mr. Chair, we have Regents Simonsen, McMillan, and then Herr.
All right, Regent Simonsen.
Thank you, Chair Paul. Thank you, presenters. Obviously, this is a very complex, and I'm still torn about my decision on the thing. I appreciate what Regent Beeson said almost an hour ago, that I'm questioning whether two weeks is enough time. I appreciate what Regent Mayron said as far as the risk to the community. But just in the interest, and I appreciate what Regent Rocha just said as far as reduction in tuition if we just do everything online. So a lot of issues that we need to talk further about, but that's going to take a lot more time. So just to have a couple of real quick questions for Dr. Osterholm. One, what's the current turnaround time on our PCR? I think I've heard different tests are done that takes two weeks. That seems long to me. Second question is, Dr. Toler mentioned false negatives. And I'm wondering, is that due to genetic variance, mutation in the virus, and how that may impact the virus or the vaccines that we've got coming? Which I agree, we should have something at least by early 2021. So, quick questions.
Dr. Osterholm.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Regent Simonsen. At this point, the demand for testing has dropped some as case numbers have come down since the high...
have come down since the high, and we're starting to catch up with the testing. I would say right now, for us, most of the country, it is a twenty-four to forty-eight-hour wait to get the testing done. The problem is, as soon as that testing volume goes back up again, as case numbers start to increase, we're going to see that challenge again. So that's it. As far as the mutational issues, this virus is aging. It's aging just like a human ages, in the sense that if you looked at pictures of your fifteen, twenty, thirty years ago, and today, they'd be basically different-looking pictures, but it would be the same you. And so far, from the virus standpoint, we have one hint that there may be a more transmissible virus, a strain that's emerged, but generally speaking, there's no evidence at all that these have changed. We're not concerned about the issue of whether or not the vaccines will work. You're going to hear a story today coming out that there's someone who's been infected a second time in Hong Kong, very convincing evidence of that. And one of the things we have worried about, and you've heard me talk about this durable immunity issue, how long will, once you have been protected by disease or by vaccine, how long will it last? So that's the challenge we have right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Regent Simonsen. Regent McMillan.
Thank you, Chair Powell, and thanks to all of our administration and subject matter experts for putting together a comprehensive and, I think, very good presentation, albeit with a few things that I'd like to, I'd like to probe deeper on. But before I, I ask those two questions I have, first of all, the way I'm looking at this, and I think this is most closely articulated by Regent Canyania is, is that as long as we think we can bring students on campus, and this is a housing-on-campus question, and they will be at least as safe as they would have been wherever they were, I'm going to support going forward with our original plan. When we get to a point, and this is where I believe the administration is, where we can no longer, where we actually believe they're going to be less safe than they would otherwise be, then I think it's incumbent on us for a lot of reasons, spoken by many of my colleagues, whether it's community risk, faculty risk, staff risk, or risk to the students themselves, we have a duty then to act. And I too have been heavily impacted and by very thoughtful and very extensive and numbering into the hundreds of parental emails to me and to many of you, but lots of them at UMD again, that suggests we want to accept this risk. And, you know, that, that's probably the toughest issue here is, what do we do with that? But, so that's the standard I'm applying. And, and I've got one other comment, and then two questions, Chair Powell. And the comment is this, and it relates to the quarantining of off-campus students. Provost Croson talked about just the Twin Cities numbers, or forty-six hundred. I don't have the, but, you know, we've got housing capacity and, and off-campus students living across the system, and I don't know the numbers at Rochester, Morris, and Croxton. I do know Duluth's number, and it's quite substantial, you know, over half of that, I think they have twenty-four hundred on-campus, you know, students they're dealing with. And, and we have it, to me, I've heard a convincing case. I don't know the numbers at the system, but it seemed very straightforward to me that we could not conceivably, either from a cost or simply a capacity standpoint, take on the, the added challenge of housing off-campus students who need quarantining. So to the extent anybody suggested we don't want to, or we're unwilling, I don't see it that way. I, listening to the Provost and Vice President Bertelson, and having not heard from the rest of the system, the making assumption, that is just unachievable, something we could never do, even if we wanted to do it. And I know we want to help. I appreciated President Gable's response in that regard, that it's not a matter of want, it's a matter of capacity. But that's how I see that issue. Now, on to my two questions. Regent Beeson articulated this. I, and I, I plan to support President Gable's proposal, but I have a significant reservation in doing so, and it's this. What will two weeks get us? And really, what are the metrics that we plan to look at? And I'm not looking for a number, you know, X percent of the population. I just really need a little bit more help before I can cast an affirmative vote that we're going to see something and that, or that you're going to see something that's going to drive you in two weeks to make a, a different decision, or a better decision than what we can make today. So that's my first question. And my second question is a sub-part of that, and that is, I hope, but I haven't seen, that we're looking at, at other Minnesota and nearby communities. I'm interested in South Carolina. I'm interested in Alabama, but I'm way more interested, and this gets back to our system issue. What are the numbers in Fargo-Moorhead? What's happening at Minnesota State Moorhead? What's happening at North Dakota State? What's going on at UMD's closest peer in Mankato, St. Cloud, Rochester, Duluth? Because this, this, this entire conversation is very Twin Cities-centric, and I, granted, that's forty thousand of our students, but as we go forward, if we support this decision today, and then we come back and we have another decision to make in two weeks, this Regent at least is going to be looking very carefully for some indication as to what schools in those other markets that are far more relevant than Michigan or Maryland, to me, at least as to those things, and perhaps as to the Twin Cities, that we're gonna, we're gonna see something. So again, just to summarize, what are we going to look for in the next two weeks that's going to enable us to make a better decision than we can make today? And will that be informed by local, geographically proximate Upper Midwest outcomes, both on the public health data and in the academic experiences to our colleagues, or our, our peers, not just Big Ten peers? I hope we're looking at both those. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Regent McMillan, for those good questions. Let me, and I think President Gable, I mean, Regent McMillan is kind of getting, gotten to the heart of what, what is on the mind of many, many Regents and, and, and the questions that he poses. Do you want to take, start off on that one, President Gable? And then I should note that Dr. Osterholm had a hard stop at twelve-thirty, and so he's no longer with us. We have other, obviously, other terrific experts. But President Gable, why don't we start with you?
Thank you, Chair Powell. So I want to speak just for a second on why we chose this two-week window before I turn it over to Jill to talk about how we'll use it. So first of all, the two weeks didn't, doesn't start as soon as this resolution is voted upon by the board. It really started about a week ago, when we saw what was happening with our peers. So this is the two weeks plus, what we're already doing with observational activities related to what's happening in other communities to which we compare ourselves, and that we are using it as this first moment, when we have the chance to have actual data rather than projections. And we are looking at schools that are pretty far away from us right now, because in other parts of the country, that's where they've already started. The schools that you refer to, Regent McMillan, are starting now, at the same time we are. It's largely geographic, when the first dates of class are around the country. And so the absence of those schools as comparators is because they're just starting at the same time we are. But we would be tracking them, certainly, along with the same way that we are on the campuses, where classes have already started. So the two weeks has already started, and is in fact, longer than two weeks because of that. But we're also trying to give people certainty. And while we cannot give people certainty about a novel virus that has literally brought the entire country to its knees, we can give them certainty about dates. So that's what we're trying to do, is give as much certainty as we can. So we're picking two weeks so that we are making a call at that moment with the appropriate governance, not because something magical will happen in that two-week time, but we will have more than we have today, and we believe enough more to be able to make the right decisions that allow us to prioritize health and safety well before any kind of refund deadline, so that students can make choices about their situation and about their financial circumstances in ways that we know are still a great loss to them, but shouldn't be an unfair loss financially. But how to best use that time, that time that is essentially a compromise between what would give us absolute certainty, we don't know when that will happen, and more certainty than we have now, so that we feel like our risks are better understood, and that we can make a proposal more anchored than we can today. In fact, I'll turn over to Jill DeBoer, who can be more public health-specific than I can.
Thank you. Director DeBoer.
Thank you, President Gable. Thank you, Chair Powell, and Regent McMillan for the really great question. And I think those of you who were here for my last presentation about public health, layered public health approach, you know that it is my typical approach to always talk system-wide about all of our campuses. And I know today has been a Twin Cities focus for a lot of our data, but our chancellors are on this call, and we, we knew that would be the case. And also, we're just going as fast as we can, send as much information as we can. Often, this is a math problem for us in terms of just the virus and the number of people. And so obviously, the Twin Cities campus is our biggest math problem, but we are working with all of the campus leaders to look at their communities. So what we'll be doing in the, the time that we have is to work with county public health in each of our campus areas. So that's Polk County, Stevens County, St. Louis County, Olseth County. And then in the metro, we have Ramsey, Hennepin, and Minneapolis. And we'll work with MDAH as well to look at the case demographics. The way that the state does their case demographics now, the age ranges, if you look at their, their dashboard, is fifteen to nineteen, and twenty to twenty-four. So for our community, those breakdowns are a little bit difficult to interpret. So I've already put in a request to a few of the counties, and I'll do the rest today, depending on your decision, to help us gather information about the age ranges that is, that are specific to us, eighteen to twenty-four. We'll look at those daily, if we can get access to that data, to see how transmission is occurring and reported cases, as students are already arriving in those communities now, because we know, including my daughter, some are moving in now. And they have moved in, in Morris, and off-campus in Duluth as well. We will look at the changing federal guidelines, if there are any, based on the experience with peer institutions. In all honesty, that statement by Deborah Brooks from the Federal Task Force caught us off-guard. We were very surprised by that. And we want to make sure, in the next several days, if there are any changes at the federal level or the state, that we know about that. And we will be prompting our partners to say, listen, you need to let us know if you're going to change the guidelines. We'll also be looking at, one more time, at our layered public health system, to make sure that we feel confident that the testing programs we have in place, the contact tracing programs we have in place with our partner public health, our isolation and quarantine, and other services that we have carefully planned for. If we compare them to the experiences of our peers with the number of cases they have seen, do we still feel confident we can meet the needs of our communities in all the campuses? And again, that will vary by the community. It's a lot to do in a short period of time, but this will be our commitment to just work and work and work to see if there's anything in that information that we're gathering that makes us, gives us a clearer path forward.
Thank you, Director DeBoer. Regent McMillan, follow-up, or does that address the question?
No, I'm, I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I, just for my, speaking for my, for myself, Director DeBoer, that list of actions that you just gave us has, has been, I think, the clearest statement that we've had today of, you know, what exactly you're going to do, which is, you know, gather data specifically around the target group, nail down where the federal guidelines are going to be, and then a detailed review of all of our layers, testing, tracing, isolation for potential, you know, strengthening. So I think that that's a very helpful answer. Thank you. Regent Herr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to be honest. I'm really torn by the impact of our decision that we'll be making today. As someone who values people and win-win situations for everybody, the situation that we're called upon, or, or the decision that we'll call upon to make today seems to me to be a lose-lose situation, where someone comes out, but we, we, we won't feel totally good about it because of the impact that it has on, on so many people on so many different levels. I know that this is not a perfect plan, but what we have before us is the best plan for our situation. And I have full faith in our staff, in our administration, that what they're bringing before us is the best thinking and the best effort. I, I thank them for their honesty in letting us know that Plan A, which we all approved in June, that they weren't totally ready, that they're totally not ready to open the school for the students. And, and it's good that they're honest now versus going ahead with questions. So, so thank you, staff. Thank you for, for your work and effort on this. But as a Regent, I know that the responsibility for this situation falls on me. And so today, I will vote in support of the resolution, knowing that it is not perfect, but believing that it is our best effort at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Regent Herr. I, I believe we have a couple more who would like to speak. Mr. Steves, is that, can you tell me who's, 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 who else is on the list?
We have Regent Anderson and Regent Davenport up.
And then that, that will conclude. Okay, Regent Anderson.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. You know, this has been an interesting two-hour discussion. I've tried to study what I can, since we got this notice on Thursday, as much as I can. And I tell you, I was very much moved by the emails. I, I sit up in Alexandria, which is on the western border of the state, and in our area, I think we have a whole different view of COVID than the seven-county metro area. Maybe we're just fortunate that we, we haven't been inundated. I also want to say that, that the, oh, I have a really, really soft heart for the students. Been over forty years ago, but I remember being a student and having my senior year, and having prom, and having graduation, and moving into my dormitory. And so I sit here with a, with a really, really conflicted situation of what we should do. I'm also being in the funeral industry. I, I understand the issues that have happened with mental health, and I know with other, other people with heart disease, and people with cancer have, have delayed treatments, and they've been victims of this disease too. And it is really, really difficult. I think some decisions we make today, a month from now, might be looked at as a great decision, or it might be looked as a poor decision, depending on what happens in the future. And unless we're fortune-tellers, and we just don't have the ability to, to look at that. I do, however, believe we have to err on the side of safety. And I, because of that, and the two-week window, I will support the president's plan. But I want you to know, it's been a really, really, really difficult situation. There are schools all around me opening, North Dakota State, South Dakota State, Croxton, University of North Dakota, although I did hear by one of our experts today, which was news to me, that the University of North Dakota now has seventy-one cases. I don't know if that's considered an outbreak or not, so that was news. So it can happen in other places. I believe with Regent Mayron, I believe both Regent Rocha and Regent Mayron, that we want the kids to be safe, want the students to be safe, and maybe the dormitory is the best place. But then also, Regent Mayron doesn't want, you know, five thousand more people descending on our Minneapolis community, and it's about those people too. So to make a long story short, I've been really, really conflicted. But as I vote, I will support the, the motion as written. Thank you.
Thanks, Regent Anderson. Regent Davenport.
Thank you, Chair Powell. And my questions on what we gained by the delay have been answered by Ms. Beers, so I hope we're all listening. I want to also thank all the parents, students, faculty, staff, employees, and others that weighed in with their views, offering off, often imposing, opposing views. But we did say from the onset that the health, the safety and well-being of the university community, the broader community, was paramount to this decision. And so that's the basis of the support for the delay. I'm hopeful, but maybe not so I'm hopeful, but maybe not so optimistic as some others about students coming back to campus, but I think this two-week window will give us a better picture to make a better informed choice when that decision, if it does, comes up. So thank you.
Thank you, Regent Davenport. Mr. Steves, I think we've made it all the way through the list.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I believe we have two motions that are going to be offered. The first would be Regent Shu is intending, I believe, to offer a motion related to a dashboard, and then Regent Mayron is intending to offer a motion to divide the resolution. So if you take up Regent Shu's motion first, and if it is successful in adding it, then Regent Mayron would be able to decide how she wanted to divide the bullet points in the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Steves. Before, Regent Shu, I do, we're going to get to, you go to the dashboard right now. Before I turn to you, I'd like to ask Director DeBurg one more time. I think we all understand the difficulty with sort of gathering and collecting the data, you know, so that is precisely, you know, the dashboard precisely represents the university community, and that's difficult. I think we can all understand, you know, why, and that there are, you know, there are issues with the sources of the data. I guess the question is, is there a willingness on the part of the university to collect that data and make it available, you know, with the understanding that it is incomplete? So I guess that's a question, Director DeBurg, either for you or for President Gable, or both?
I'll start, Mr. Chair, and Jill, of course, is the subject matter expert, but I will say, we do collect the data. We collect all of our data, and we're very happy to provide it. But there are issues with providing it in the form of a dashboard that we know is fundamentally inaccurate. So we generally don't like to provide, it's not a question of transparency, it's a question of accuracy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jill to talk about that and our options.
Director DeBurg.
Yeah, absolutely. It's not a question of collecting information in order for our health operations team and our senior leadership team to plan for and manage the layered public health plan that we have presented to you. We have to be looking at information all of the time. So it's not about, do we have it? We do have it. So, and we certainly can report that to you in any, you know, any format that you want. The question of a website where you update it every day is sort of the question that we've been monitoring. We have to look at the information we have from a couple of different perspectives. We would have to review some of the information that we have with our Office of General Counsel to make sure we're not releasing anything that would put us against either FERBA or the Minnesota Data Practices Act or health information. We also have to make sure that if we, we have to make sure we can explain what the data means. For example, the issue about the number of beds available for isolation may not make sense if it's, as I described. And the testing data from Boynton is not necessarily, or is not at all representative of our communities. So we certainly can do whatever you would like us to do in terms of sharing information. We just have to make sure we're doing it appropriately for both the legal and helping people understand what they mean, what the data mean.
Thank you, Director DeBurg. Regent Shu, I mean, I'm hearing a very high willingness to provide whatever data we can in an appropriate way, and, you know, and that'll be developed, and we can see whether that, you know, we find that to be adequate, or whether we want to press back for a bit more. But hearing that, are you still interested in having that as a resolution? Or could we leave that one as an agreement from the administration that they're very willing to do this, you know, in the ways that they can?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would be very happy to see what they can provide to us, but I think it needs to be timely and, you know, daily, not like weekly or monthly or whatever. So if that's what they're committing to do, then I'm happy to see that.
Okay, I think we appreciate that, Regent Shu. And I think we do, you know, I think President Gable, I think we'll, let's see it, you know, let's see what you can come up with and what the format would be. And we understand, you know, legal constraints, and obviously, we have to do all that, but show us what you're going to do. I think the community would appreciate it, and then we'll, we can decide as a board whether it's, you know, we're getting to where we need to get to. So I think what we've just, Regent Shu has just agreed to withdraw that motion, and we'll move on now to Regent Mayron's point about dividing.
Well, let me just say, I'm a little torn on this. As I listened to all my colleagues speak, I think I only heard one of my colleagues indicate that he would not support the motion. So I'm not sure it's needed to bring forward. If I'm reading my colleagues incorrectly, I'm certainly happy to make a motion for division of the question so that we can set out the resolution separately as it relates to remote learning in the next two weeks and move-in dates. So I'm happy to do it either way, I'm just not sure it's necessary.
Well, if that's where you're coming out on it, Regent Mayron, the options, I think, are to move forward with it or to withdraw it?
I will withdraw it.
Okay. So we've had an extremely thoughtful and robust discussion this afternoon. Everyone's had a chance to speak. And with that, Mr. Steves, unless I've missed something, I think we're ready to call the roll.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Regent Shu.
I just have a, I have a question, and maybe, maybe some of my colleagues had helped me on this, but especially the UMD, the people who are more familiar with UMD, it seems that UMD maybe could be also separated from this, and certainly Rochester, but I just wondered if anybody was interested in splitting it that way.
There's President Gable, you want to respond to that?
Mr. Chair, Regent Shu, the chancellors are on the phone. This proposal was developed by and in consultation with what we've been calling the Emergency Management and Policy Committee, which includes all of the chancellors. Jill, Jacob, Tolar consults with Dr. Ulster, home has faculty and other representation. It's our, it's our working group that all these decisions, so when we refer to the administration in the context of these decisions, it includes all the chancellors. So this motion comes forward from all of us, but if anyone would like to question those chancellors about their plans and how their communities have specifically reacted, they are available and on the phone.
Chancellor Black, would you like to comment?
Hello, Chair Powell, members of all the regions. I want to add my thanks to the hard work you're doing today on this issue, and also add my thanks to the many parents and students and others who have reached out to me as well. We at UMD feel like we are as ready as we can be and feel like we're in pretty good shape in terms of our campus being as safe as it can be under all the circumstances. Our staff have worked extremely hard on that preparation, and we feel like it's, we're in as best shape as we can be to reopen. But we're also monitoring what's happening with COVID in Lyon County, excuse me, in St. Louis County and in Duluth as well. And it does create some concerns for us. I share the comments that have been made about the potential dangers of our young people spreading the virus. And in fact, I've received communications from a number of faculty on the UMD campus about their concerns of students spreading the virus on campus, and their concern for their own health, as well as the health for their, for their families and those who are most vulnerable. So it's, I'm also conflicted. You know, we were ready to open up and to start things on time. Students are scheduled to move in here middle part of this coming week. Many of our off-campus students have already moved in, and we've already heard reports of parties and gatherings among them. I've also sent out a communication to all the bar owners in the area, pleading with them to be our partner and helping to enforce all the COVID-related precautions and to do what they can to help our students. But ultimately, it is a gamble in a number of ways. So we are prepared at UMD to support whichever decision the board may make on this. As the president has indicated, there are no good choices here. There are choices that we make concerned about the welfare of our students, our faculty and staff, but there is no clear, easy answer. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you might have about UMD. But as I said, we are, we will do our best to implement whichever decision the board makes.
Thank you, Chancellor Black. Any follow-up questions for the chancellor?
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Yep. Regent Shu.
Chancellor Black, as you noted, a lot of students are back on campus already. I don't, I don't think you have that many freshmen that the problem would be, I guess, any worse. I think this discussion and this meeting has really served as a good message to everybody who's involved here, including students and potential, you know, new freshmen coming into our system. I just think that since your campus is so close to move-in date, that maybe we carve out your students and allow them to move in on time. I'd like your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Well, it does, the decision to delay does affect about 2,400 students in UMD housing as Regent McMillan referred to earlier. I, as I said, we are ready to implement whichever decision the board, the board makes. I have a number of communications that have come directly to me on both sides. Some favor us moving forward, others favor us being part of the two-week delay. So I don't have an easy answer. I wish I did, Regent Shu, for which way is best for UMD at this point. We are prepared to go either direction, and we will do our best to implement whatever the board decides.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor Black. President Gable, do you have any other comments on this topic?
No, only to see if we want to hear from Chancellor Carroll.
Chancellor Carroll.
Yes, here in Rochester, we also feel prepared to enact either decision. And in this community that is so health-focused, on a campus that's health-focused, we're following the science carefully. And I appreciated hearing from Jill what would be happening in those two weeks. And given that we are on the same calendar as the Twin Cities with classes starting on the eighth, I think the two-week pause, if we have it, based on your decision, will give us time to look at regional data and shore up our readiness.
All right, thank you, Chancellor Carroll.
Mr. Chair, we have two regents who have asked to speak again, Regents Beeson and McMillan.
Regent Beeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to, I was hoping to just make a quick comment on the Boynton data comment. I want to thank you for pushing the staff to come up with something voluntarily. I think, you know, for me, it's fairly simple, number of tests given, number of positive tests that are received. And, you know, let's not hide the data from the students whose information is being used for the, for the, for the material. And let's not underestimate the public and the students' ability to manage the data and understand the data and the limitations of the data, which I think are all points well-taken by the administration.
Thank you, Regent Beeson. Regent McMillan.
Thank you, Chair Powell, and thank you, Regent Shu, for pursuing an avenue that has been really tugging at me. And the rationale or the reason for that tugging is not simply because I live in Duluth and see this campus all the time, but the volume and thoughtfulness and personalized nature of the input I've had from well over 100 parents on this topic about UMD's move-in date and the four days that they've essentially had to sort out what they're going to do, whether it's return a U-Haul rental trailer or something far more expensive, is significant. And it's a very different issue for Rochester, given their schedule, as Chancellor Carroll just said, than it is for Chancellor Black in that community. So I think about it in two ways. Really, you know, President Gable's interchange with me on my earlier question, she said it's really not two weeks, it's more like three, if you're thinking about the Twin Cities campus in Rochester. It's something far less than that for the value and quality of the data that we're going to gain at Duluth, given that, you know, they're, they're not, they're supposed to be starting now, and campuses like Mankato, their closest peers in North Dakota are starting now. So I don't know that the value gained from the added information is as great at UMD as it is at Duluth, or at, the Twin Cities, given that, you know, there's, there's no change in that schedule for a while in terms of how it impacts parents. And then again, back to the question of what do those parents do who suddenly, four days before they're supposed to move their children in, what are they supposed to do? It's just the impact is so much greater for the UMD parents and students than it does otherwise. And I guess the other factor I wanted to say is, we've given faculty the opportunity to deliver courses as they choose, and if they don't feel safe, obviously, they could go forward and say, we're going to teach online. And I think we have to have, I'm curious, and I have a question for the General Counsel at this point, before I would go further with Regent Shu's proposal, which is not a formal amendment, but would be, what does our contract look like with parents, all the parents who've emailed all of us and said, you know, we're willing to assume the risk? Does our housing contract build some of that in? And are we taking on additional liability to do a carve-out of Duluth at this point that we, you know, from a legal standpoint? It doesn't seem to me that if we've got language built into those contracts, I know the emails from parents don't mean anything in a court of law, but, but Regent Powell said this at the opening, we certainly have heard from folks that, that they understand the risks and want to proceed. Again, as Regent Kenyoni said, that's our decision, not theirs. But I am curious about what housing contracts look like today and what that means, if that's possible for, you know, maybe President Gable wants to speak to that, maybe nobody does, but it seems to me we've tried to address that in housing contracts, and I'm very intrigued by what that might say.
President Gable, I'll give you the, sort of the first shot on that, and you may want to invite General Counsel to weigh in as well, but why don't you start?
I actually think that's really a question for the General Counsel.
Okay. General Counsel.
Chair Powell, Regent McMillan, I'll do the best I can with that question. From a financial and contract law point of view, the administration plan to make sort of proportional accommodations with refunds, et cetera, you know, addresses sort of the primary financial term. Certainly, there's a recognition in the documentation of, you know, the coronavirus circumstance and the risks it entails. But I have to say that the larger question that's before you is not a contract law question, but rather still in part a legal question, but nevertheless, not sort of so much defined by contract law, which is, what are your responsibilities to keep students and our community safe? And is this board acting in a fashion that is exercising reasonable care? And I think you should be focused on the reasonable care question more than the contract question. And with that, I think you also need to stay or have in mind, from a reasonable care and safety perspective, and I know it's kind of blended in with some practical realities, but from a reasonable care and safety perspective, you know, are the Rochester, UMD, and Twin Cities decisions similar? Or are there Or are there distinguishing features that would have you differentiate your decision for UMD and for Rochester from the Twin Cities? And that's, that goes beyond the legal. But it is the, maybe in a lot of ways, the heart of the reasonable care question that you have before you. So I hope that's helpful, even though it returns the question back to you as Regents in terms of it fundamentally being a policy choice.
Thank you, General Counsel. You know, my interpretation of your response is that it's, you know, we're focused here, it's a public health, you know, issue that we're focusing on. And what's our duty in that regard? Okay. Mr. Steves, do we have other, I think we've gone through everyone at this point?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any other speakers on the list.
Okay. Let's take the roll call on the motion.
All right. This is on the, this is on the resolution. Regent Anderson. Regent Anderson. Regent Anderson appears to be absent right now. We'll come back to him. Regent Beeson.
No.
Regent Beeson votes no. Regent Davenport?
Yes.
Regent Davenport votes yes. Regent Herr?
Yes.
Regent Herr votes yes. Regent Schu? Regent Schu?
I've said no.
Regent Schu votes no. Regent Kenyanya?
Yes.
Regent Kenyanya votes yes. Regent Mayron?
Yes.
Regent Mayron votes yes. Regent McMillan?
Yes.
Regent McMillan votes yes. Regent Rocha?
No.
Regent Rocha votes no. Regent Simonson?
Yes.
Regent Simonson votes yes. Regent Swigum?
Yes.
Regent Swigum votes yes. I'll go back to Regent Anderson. Regent Anderson is absent. Chair Powell?
Yes.
Chair Powell votes yes. Mr. Chair, there are eight votes in favor and three opposed.
All right, eight in favor, three opposed. The motion passes. There being no additional business before the board at this special meeting, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for a very, very good discussion of a very, very important issue. Thank you all, and good afternoon.